Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Zach Bashir-Tosh.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call the order, the February 15th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Chair Bashir-Tosh.
Here.
Vice Chair Cader.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Cor. Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. The Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with the recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for non-consent public hearing, Item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time.
Non-agenda Item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioners request specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving consent items 4A, please?
I'll make a motion.
Vice Chair Cader, thank you.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Commissioner Strickland, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Biddle, Cor, and Neal absent.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the Commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Biddle, Cor, and Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Before we begin, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of the previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you. We were going to have our Development Services Director, Christopher Boyle, speak on this matter. And while he prepares the podium, I'd note that there was a memorandum transmitting comments from the Leadership Council, other public comments, and from the Home Builders Association of Kern County. Those were transmitted in a memo, and it's also available at your Dais. And we have a full copy available should anybody need to review that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, fortunate to have a quorum this evening. Item 6A is a presentation on text amendments to the Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17. You could also perhaps call this presentation "The Long Unwinding Road to an Approved Housing Element," and that would be just as applicable. Some of you have seen this before. Some in the audience perhaps may have seen this presentation before. I'll try and be as brief as I can. Let's begin. Why are we here today? Why is an ordinance proposed to Title 17? There's really three distinct reasons why we're here and why staff brought forward an ordinance that addresses residential development standards within Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code. First is to comply with state housing law. The second would be for housing element certification, and the third would be to address City Council referral to update zoning ordinance. In a way, what you see tonight is a council-sponsored ordinance vetted through the Planning and Development Committee. Let's look at this a little bit. Why state legislation? Well, since the 2015 fifth cycle was completed, there's been a small landslide of housing law that's come across the dais of Sacramento. And this is an example. This is just the bills proposed in 2022 from Sacramento. And these are the bills that ultimately were adopted. That's a long list of new law just in 2022, and you would find that the other years, in the last eight years, are very similar in nature. There is a lot of housing law. Governor Newsom would note that there is a housing crisis, and you can see the investment that the city has made in terms of our homelessness responses, and that's typical of many municipalities throughout the state of California. Housing law is meant to begin to address that. The second reason is our regional housing needs allocation, a part of the housing element. Our residential zoning was identified by the state of California, and our first conversations with HCD is our number-one constraint to housing. So it's really a mandate to find, to look at those constraints and identify ways to better streamline our zoning code. That's a challenge. The city was assigned a RENA number, or a Regional Housing Need Allocation Number, of 37,461 total units. I had the pleasure of speaking with the director in McFarland today, who is struggling mightily to accommodate his 244 units. But then he noted that he just approved a 49-lot subdivision, which was 20% of his total RENA, two months in. You can see the difference, the stark difference, in what many of the municipalities in the County of Kern are having to deal with versus the City of Bakersfield. The City of Bakersfield's tasked with providing 65% of all housing in Kern County, so I have an 8,100-square-mile county with 151-square-mile city, which will provide 65% of the countywide RENA, or 4,783 units annually. Of that, 2,277 units a year must be low or very low income, and 2,406 units per year, which is a task in and of itself, to build 2,406 market-rate units per year, are also assigned. So 18,211 total for low, and 19,250 market-rate units for moderate and above. 76% of all low and very low-income units in the county overall are tasked to be created within this 151-square-mile municipality. That's not easy. I think I've noted that before. But I'll just note it again. That's not easy. The third reason, council referral from the Dais. Councilmember Smith provided a referral that we complete the adoption of a comprehensive update of the residential zoning ordinance sufficient to provide full compliance with state law. And that's in the council goals, as highlighted right here. And from that, there was a referral made from the Dais to the Planning and Development Committee. Staff subsequently hired a subconsultant, Mintier Harnish, as a subconsultant to RINCON, our Housing Element and General Plan Consultant, to prepare that ordinance. The consultant came to the Planning and Development Committee three times, made presentations, and took the direction of the Planning and Development Committee on the various topics, whether that be parking, objective standards, the various zone districts, and the like. And in each case, the council committee provided direction as to what they desired, and they did that via vote. Ultimately, after the third meeting, they provided unanimous support for the draft ordinance, and staff was tasked with bringing that ordinance ultimately to the Planning Commission. You're looking at the final draft tonight, and I just want to say that even some of the comments that you've received are included within this draft ordinance because staff wants to make certain that we're looking at all law and being consistent with all law here and now. So, recommendation, your recommendation tonight will be forwarded to the City Council. Council will provide an introduction and a second reading to that ordinance, and it would become law on the 31st day after that second reading, after a 30-day waiting period. I've noted in the past, we have rezones coming your way. They're contingent upon adoption of this ordinance. We have annexations waiting in the queue at LAFCO. They're contingent upon adoption of this ordinance. Because they are zoned consistent with this code, noting that it's necessary for these types of zones to be in place for successful adoption of our housing element. Briefly, the Chapter 1710 is inclusive to all residential zones today, where from RS to RH, all residential zones are in 1710, so they're consolidated into one chapter. There's a real transition from lists, long, long pages of lists of uses and the like, to utilization of tables. Some of the zones, noting that our current general plan is a shared general plan with the county, and both the county and the city are engaged in creating their own general plans. Many of the larger lot prefixes or suffixes to our zoning districts have been stricken from this ordinance. The E estate zone is literally identical to the city's RS zone, so the E estate zone will be discontinued. There's new zones for compliance with state law. There's a removal of the residential parking requirements, and there are objective development standards that are proposed. So when we look at density, currently, the zones don't have a floor, so they all nest together. Essentially, what you do in R4, you could do R1 in an R4 zone because they're all nested together. That's one of the big reasons why the state said, "No good." We average 3.3 dwelling units an acre per HCD. I didn't calculate that. They know more about what we build today than we do. And that's not right when you have zones that don't have any floors. If there's an expectation, we have a zone that we can build 70-something units in, but that just doesn't happen because we can also build seven units in that same zone with a 6,000-square-foot lot size. So the new ordinance provides for floors and ceilings throughout. Logically, R1, typical R1-zone district, allows for our current developers to still build at their typical densities of between two and seven units. R2 provides for a new type of housing, a missing middle, a small-lot, single-family component, that we have great promise in in terms of we have subdivisions already taking advantage of that, waiting for this ordinance to be adopted. We have R3 zones, which would be a typical apartment complex zone. R4, R4 is really where we start to see mandated bridges and thresholds being met by the state. State will not allow residential development to count towards low-income housing unless it's at least 20 units per acre. And it won't allow very-low-income housing to be counted towards your RENA of very low and extremely low numbers unless it's at least 30 dwelling units per acre. Hence, new zones to meet those thresholds that are new state law that we can then implement through our housing element. R6, kind of a futuristic zone, where we're going to have a high-speed rail station in the lifespan of this zone, and transit-oriented development may very well be a great idea around that high-speed rail station. And we look forward to the future and what it brings. And a residential holding zone, which basically requires, holds that land for residents' development. At such time as development is proposed, a general plan amendment and a rezone to the desired densities is required. I noted the tabular nature of the schedules. I would note that very easy to find the uses, relate them to the individual zones. To the far right-hand side of the tables, there is associated codes or references to other codes within Title 17 that help the reader gain additional information or understanding as to the nature of that particular determination within the code. There's also, there's also a description for each of those zones with new purpose statements that are absent from the current zoning, allows for a prospective developer or just a homeowner to understand what the purpose and intent of that zone is, that their home or potential home might be located in. Development standards are also put into tabular settings, and they address density by zone, by shrinking setbacks to provide for additional buildable area. In previous zoning amendments, we've no longer have a floor ratio and other setback restrictions that were considered to be restrictive to development at a higher density as well. So this ordinance finishes that work of the council to take away from the ordinance as it relates to being constrained to production. There are two new mixed-use zones. And a mixed-use zone is, you could call it almost a bonus zone, because for C1 zones who wish to annex into an MX1 zone, all of the use schedules associated with the C1 zone are still in place, with the addition of the ability to place residential within that zone at the same time. So you can have a mixed-use dynamic MX1 for more of a neighborhood mixed-use, MX2 for more regional mixed-use, and they rely upon the C1 and the C2 zone districts. So if you have a C1 zone and you'd like to entertain residential, you can rezone into the MX1. You still have the use allowances of the C1 zone, but at the same time, you can now add residential. That comes at recommendation of HCD to provide for more mixed-use opportunities other than the CB and the CC zone. Here's what that largely looks like. Neighborhood mixed-use, C1, 20 to 30 dwelling units at density, thinking of those minimum thresholds to count them towards low or very low income. And MX2, C2 regional commercial use schedule with 30 to 50 dwelling units, consistent with the very low income. The committee also directed the creation of development standards, objective development standards, for those who wish to entertain a streamlined development process. And at the Directional Planning Development Committee, they are solely focused on site design and these new requirements for multi-unit residential development. Also have a point-based system to provide amenity, to bring equity to all parts of the community. So some additional revisions. There's a new and updated definition section. There are new tabular formatting, as noted. There's removal of parking requirements. I'll speak to that. There's 10-acre parcel-size requirements for the implementation of a PD zone. There's a removal of single-unit housing as an allowable use in the CC zone. Our commercial center zone is really focused upon now in creating a higher-density downtown component, although some CC zones are outside of the downtown core. There's removal of residential uses in the C1 and C2 zone, and a switch towards consideration of the MX zones. Consolidated accessory dwelling unit chapter refers to state law. There are countless ADU laws that have been adopted over the lifespan of the fifth cycle, and so consequently, there's a reference to state law, much like we refer to the density bonus law at the state. It provides that work, not constantly trying to catch up to that. But we'll be also releasing an ADU handbook at Development Services that will help people maneuver through a proposal to build an ADU. And there's removal of some specific zones. I asked for action tonight. The city is currently not in compliance with state housing law. Simple as that. There's a fine line between being not in substantial compliance and being decertified. I'm not sure where that line lies, but we are not in compliance with state housing law as of 12/31 of 2023. Zoning ordinance update is a necessity, a necessity for compliance and adoption, noting HCD's initial commentary as it relates to this ordinance. State law is addressed in the ordinance amendment before you tonight. Without it, the Housing Element Vacantsites rezone relies upon it. The Housing Element Annexations, which bring a significant portion of our vacant sites inside the city, rely upon it. The Housing Element itself relies upon it. And adoption makes all the puzzle pieces fit in a pathway towards adoption of our housing element. Currently slated with a third read, we're about to finish our second draft, and we expect to adopt sometime before the end of the year, after addressing one more round of HCD comments. We're hopeful of that. That's a realistic target, noting the challenges of our RENA. So there's been some degree of dialogue as it relates to parking. I would note that the state of California has already weighed in on a move towards shifting away from parking as a requirement to residential development. AB 2097 provides no requirement for parking within a half mile of a quality transit route. Quality transit route would have stops about every 15 minutes. And we have two of those routes already within the city, so you already have two lines of one mile wide that the city could not provide for any requirement for parking within it. AB 2244 also provides for no parking with housing that's on the site or shares a site with a religious institution. We have lots of religious institutions that have excess lands, and the state, in an effort to encourage development of those lands for residential purposes, also requires that no parking be provided as a component of that. My church has a nice football field that's just perfect for that. I want to note that this proposed ordinance does not impede any developer from providing parking. Doesn't say you cannot provide parking. There is no prohibition of, in any way, that would prohibit the provision of parking. Two, there's been some commentary that the city's efforts within this ordinance are slanted towards multifamily production and higher-density production. That's not true either. The truth of the matter is, the city is in the business of providing more housing, all kinds of it, in all kinds of places, for all kinds of people to have access to reasonably-priced housing. If you looked at my vacant sites inventory and the challenges of RENA, I've been here five years, and the city's never come close to building 2,406 residential, single-family residential units a year. It's not just a challenge to build affordable housing, it's a challenge to build market-rate housing at the same time. Last year, I built 1,234 units, which is about half of what I need to build annually, every year, for eight years. These not focused on higher density or multifamily. We're focused on providing a wide swath of housing opportunities that meet all the needs of the residents of the city. There's also commentary about potential unintended consequences, and although there isn't any examples of a potential unintended consequences, I suppose we could envision every residential project in the city not having any parking and bringing the streets of Bakersfield to a collapsing halt and causing gridlocked drought. I guess that might be a potential consequence. But the realities are that before we had a zoning ordinance, there wasn't any need to legislate parking. Now, mindful, the city wasn't as big as it is today, but there's a trust in the American way that, a free-market society, I have a trust in my development community to provide the parking that the market desires. Not every project needs two parking stalls for each residential unit. Some don't. Some can use shared parking. But I can tell you one thing about a potential unintended consequence of failure to act, is that we will not be able to complete the pathway towards an adopted housing element, period. We will just stop because we need this ordinance adopted in order to move forward with our vacant site rezones, both in the city and the annexations outside the city. I'll close with, never in my 25 years of doing this have I had developer opposition to not being regulated. My wife told me that it must be the end of days because how could that possibly happen? But here we have a comment letter from the HBA that says, "We need to be regulated." I don't know how to respond to it, other than I've asked the building industry three words since the day I got here. That's "Just build houses." I need them to build 2,406 market-rate units every year, and I need to build 2,277 affordable units every year for the next eight years. I think they can figure out how much parking each one of those units require. I'll close by saying, it's time to lead. The state of California has already told you the pathway they're going towards, towards taking constraints to housing production out of the picture. It usually starts with a small law, then it gets to a bigger one, then everything capitulates, and that's the way it is. I noted there's a fine line between certified housing, decertification, and substantial noncompliance. Right now, that law is one of those fuzzy places where we already have mandates that address significant or substantial noncompliance, yet they're not saying you're decertified. That's a good example of how state law is at that threshold. But you have examples where parking is already not mandated in any way, shape, or form when transit is available. It's time to lead. There's no more time to follow. It's time to lead. It's time to lead. With that said, staff concludes the recommended ordinance amendments to Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code are appropriate and consistent with the Planning and Development Committee direction. Therefore, staff recommends your committee adopt resolution approving the text amendments to Bakersfield Municipal Code, Title 17, and recommend the same to the City Council. That completes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Chris is a little taller than I am. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Blaine Neptune. I'm with Macintosh and Associates. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed amendments to Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code, specifically how it relates to residential zoning and development. First of all, I'd like to commend the city staff for their hard work and efforts throughout this process. City staff is often overworked and underappreciated. They are subject to differences in opinions on many projects from engineers, architects, and planners like myself. But at the end of the day, we all work together for a common goal, and that is smart growth for Bakersfield. The proposed amendment will make this easier without having to use creative tools to accomplish the same goals. I'm referring to lot sizes and setbacks. I've been at Macintosh and Associates my entire career. I started in 1991. I've designed over 200 subdivisions in Bakersfield. I think my first tracks were 5290 in Seven Oaks and 5489 in Brim Hall Estates. Both averaged about 12,000 to 18,000 square-foot lots. Since then, most of the tracks range in lots from 6,000 to 8,000 square feet. None smaller than 6,000 square feet, as that's what the ordinance allows. 6,000 square feet is the minimum lot size. There was an amendment done several years ago to allow to R1 4.5, 4,500 square-foot lots. There's a couple of projects that took advantage of that. Over the last 30 years, construction cost index, for the most part, has stayed the same. Uh, gone up slightly, besides a spike in 2004 to 2008 with a housing bust, and then it popped back down. A lot of time and effort goes into the design and the construction of a subdivision to make it ready for a home builder to start. When I'm done with the subdivision, it looks bare. You see streets, sidewalks, and, and bare land. A typical subdivision, 6,000 to 8,000 square-foot lots, used to cost about $40,000 to $50,000 to get to where a home builder could build. Then COVID happened. According to a report from the Associated Builder Contractors, residential construction costs have increased 40% since February of 2020. Now those same lots are $70,000 to $80,000 a lot. This is a huge impact on new home prices. The only way to combat this increase is to spread the construction costs over more lots, and the only way to do that is to make lots smaller. Before this new ordinance, to accomplish this, we'd have to rezone lots into R3 and include a PUD overlay and request zone modifications for setbacks and other things. This new ordinance will give developers the ability to make small, smaller lots and keep housing in Bakersfield affordable. While I strongly support this, there are a couple of things I think we need to consider. Um, I've talked to staff about the floors. Uh, I'm in favor of the floors, but I also think there's some, some overlap that can be, uh, should be allowed. For instance, the R4 zone that Mr. Boyle referred to has a floor of 20. A lot of two-story walk-up apartments in Bakersfield, and there's plenty of them, get to about 17 units per acre. So there's got to be a little bit of flexibility that I, you know, I think we can consider. And finally, I think uh, we need to look at more of the public works aspect of it. I, I got something to show here if I can. Can I turn this on? So... This is just a layout we did on a project in southwest Bakersfield. The, the lots on the south side compared to the lots on the north side look huge. These lots on the south side, I know this is a bad scale, but these are 6,000 square-foot lots. That's currently the smallest lot you can have in Bakersfield. The lots in the north are what we're looking at, more 3,400, 3,500 square-foot lots. But the streets, you can tell, are disproportionate. So we need to start looking at what we can do for the infrastructure, the roads, and maybe make streets a little narrower. Uh, right now, street widths are 60-feet right-of-ways, 40-foot flowlines. And I think there's, um, you know, possibilities and potential to make these a little smaller and make it look a little bit more proportionate. We showed this layout to staff, a couple, uh, we've been working with this, and a, a certain councilman said this looked like a bunch of barracks, and we need to do something different. We did, and as Mr. Boyle recommended or, or stated, uh, we have the first small-lot subdivision in design and probably will go into construction in this area. Looks a lot different than this in the next several months. But anyway, uh, that concludes my statement or comment, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Neptune. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Dave Demahowski with the Home Builders Association of Kern County. And I don't dare get up here and, and oppose the project after Mr. Boyle's presentation. Uh, but uh, out of 488 pages, we only had a, a serious concern with one page, and that had to do with the parking. Uh, the, the trend in multifamily development today because of the very high construction costs and the overall shortage of housing has resulted in more people per unit, more occupants per unit, and more vehicles per unit. So we have no concern really with the R1 and R2, or even the R3. But when you get into higher-density developments, if, if the facility is underparked, it creates the potential for serious competition between residential uses and maybe adjoining commercial uses, or even competition between the lower-density projects and the, uh, the high-density project. Uh, most of our members in Bakersfield who are engaged primarily in the construction of market-rate uh, for-sale housing, uh, and who also do some apartments, would never develop a project that they thought was underparked based on market demand and, and market conditions. Uh, however, there is a potential with an increase in zoning for uh, higher-density development for a particular developer to kind of impose uh, parking constraints and parking issues on adjoining properties or adjoining neighborhoods. And that, that was really the, the nature of our expressing concern. We did email to you and the staff, a memo dated February 14th, and it did not recommend opposition or opposing adoption of the zoning ordinance. However, we thought that uh, there are potential unintended consequences uh, in various areas of town. I'm not speaking of downtown. That's a very unique setting. But our, our developers are engaged primarily in greenfield development in more of a suburban setting. And that's where we think the, not having some minimum standard or uh, available in the zoning could create some unintended consequences. Uh, the state is, is pushing very hard for all-electric uh, in new construction, and starting in 2026 is really going to kick in. January 1, 2026. There's a real push on the California Energy Commission right now to mandate that 100% of rental housing have access to onsite charging. And so that kind of complicates the, the issue where if a project is relying on, on street parking, it becomes problematic complying with what we expect to be very stringent uh, electric vehicle charging requirements in the future. So I think all we're suggesting at this point is that uh, I, I think there could be unanticipated consequences uh, to all of this. And we would recommend that uh, without a, any lengthy delay in your adoption of the new ordinance, that maybe have a workshop or two that would, would focus on uh, kind of greenfield development and uh, the, the issues that, complete elimination of parking requirements might uh, cause in the future. So that would be our request, a brief delay for some further workshopping. And thank you for the opportunity to comment and do compliment staff uh, and, and their consultants on a very thorough revision to the zoning ordinance. Uh, and like I said, we only had concerns with one page out of over 400. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the pro, the project? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself, and then proceed.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission staff. My name is Max Becerra. I'm principal of Pacificus Fore Company. I've been a professional planner here in Kern County for over 40 years, back when Jack Hardesty was uh, the planning director many moons ago. Uh, we've been involved in a lot of development. In fact, a lot of the land divisions um, west of Bakersfield from Coffee Road all the way out to Red Road and all the way to Seventh Standard. We've been planning in Kern County for over 40 years, uh, not only in Kern County, but throughout the Central Valley. Mr. Neptune had talked about the size of, of the single-family lots here in Bakersfield that's been in place for, for a long time. But over the course of many decades, the um, area that, that's needed for a lot of the subdivisions uh, the sizing has started to, to grow smaller. The need has uh, for it to be smaller is um, has become more appropriate. I've also had the um, the pleasure and the responsibility of being chairman for the Kern County Housing Authority for the last 30 years. I understand housing, and it's important that the um, city of Bakersfield, um, I feel adopt what staff is, is proposing. These, these changes are, are really needed. Um, they are appropriate. Know that Mr. Boyle, Mr. Johnson, and their staff have really taken a hard look at what changes we have to make, that we have to meet to meet that the state's RENA requirements. And uh, this allows Bakersfield to take a more of a forefront role to be um, uh, to be at, at the beginning of what new housing, especially residential housing, should, should look like so we can provide for the progress of our, um, of our city in, in the future. So I would uh, like to suggest that the Planning Commission please uh, consider favorably the approval of the, of all the staff work and, and the changes to uh, section Title 7, uh, 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step up to the microphone and identify yourself, and then proceed.
Good evening, staff and Planning Commission. My name is Eric Mora, principal with the Mora Partners. And um, I'm a broker and investor myself. I work with Mr. Becerra and Mr. Neptune. And you know, we see throughout, you know, our day-to-day activities and, and the real estate sales of residential property, where, you know, parking, you know, and Bakersfield's known for the Texas of California, right? Where you get more for your money compared to other Southern California cities. So, you know, we, we see the misuse of garages, right? That turn into man caves and storage rooms and, and stuff like that. So um, you know, we see that there's plenty of room for parking, you know, in, in these residential homes, you know? Um, as far as the investor's side, you know, we, we, we get stuck sometimes in projects where we're trying to carve and get creative to, to meet the parking accounts. And it's, at the end of the day, breaks up, you know, it messes up some deals, right? With the investors where they're not seeing the return because they have to eliminate certain square footage on their design, right? Or they're, or they're building to meet minimum parking standards. So I'm here to, uh, in, in support of uh, moving forward with the changes, as Mr. Boyle mentioned. And I totally agree with Mr. Neptune and Mr. Becerra. Um, I would like to see a progression here in our city as well and, and be involved with the state's, uh, you know, demands. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one else, is there anyone now who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Good evening, staff and Commission. Thanks for this meeting this evening. Appreciate all your service and all your hard work for our community. We appreciate you dearly. I just wanted to share a few of my thoughts regarding Title 17, primarily in the uh...
I'm sorry, sir, to interrupt. What was your name?
Rick Cottrell. I'm a downtown business owner. I apologize. Started rambling here. I just wanted to address some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention, including myself, regarding uh, the 24th to 30th Street corridor, primarily F Street, H and G. There's a tremendous amount of medical services that are provided in those areas in conjunction with San Joaquin Hospital that provide a lot of medical services for our community. I know that there's been some talk about some of the parking lots being converted maybe into housing or some other options. But my, my concern is, is having those services removed in those areas could create a real hardship for our community, primarily moving these medical professionals into maybe the west part of the city. West of 99 could create a, an issue of cost, could create an issue for some of our, our needs, for some of our community members who are on social security, our VAs, our, our people in low-income situations could create a problem for them not being able to afford increased medical costs. So I just wanted to bring my concern to you guys regarding that. The other issue that, that I wanted to talk about was, obviously, there's been an, an address as far as low-income housing needs in our city. We have a lot of, of open land in uh, the California East Corridor, Brundage East Corridor, Martin Luther King Corridor, for our low-income housing needs. And I think we maybe should explore those options a little bit greater. And also, I wanted to address, uh, obviously, we're, we've, we've been talking about zone densities, and we've been talking about uh, some of those issues. But in large metropolitan cities, as we know, a lot of these cities are building vertically. And, and maybe that might be something that we might want to explore as a city as to maybe see if we could start doing some more vertical building. I know downtown, some, some people have been doing some of that work. But that might help with some of the land constraints that we might have in the city, and maybe that's something we should address. The other thing is on the market-rate housing. I mean, the, the Stockdale Highway Corridor West has got a lot of open ground. There might be some opportunities there for us to develop and to kind of meet those needs. But, you know, when we think about developing, we really need to think about the available land that we have, but also how we can maximize that land. And vertical building might be something we might want to consider in the city. I mean, we don't do a lot of it here, but it might be something down the road that we might want to consider for affordability, um, you know, for, for land availability. It might be something that we might want to consider. And again, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to say I, you know, I don't approve of anything. I'm just giving my comments, and I really appreciate your guys' help and, and your hard work that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed. Seeing no one else, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express any opinions on the matter. It is only a time to ask questions. By shared care, cater.
Just a quick question. I see what Public Works is not very well represented on the dais tonight. But um, Mr. Neptune's question regarding corresponding analysis of minimum road widths, particularly in residential. Mr. Johnson, could you provide any information as far as how some of these new densities and new zones are making their way into city standards for details like roads, sidewalks, intersections?
Well, we have a circulation element, which will be part of our general plan update, which is where a lot of this will be codified within. which is where a lot of this will be codified within. In the meantime, some of these discussions can be one-on-one with the Public Works Director, and we can see what we can do there. But again, we're looking for this type of exact feedback when we get into our circulation element revisions and amendments.
And then just for the audience, I know housing element is coming first. What is the anticipated timeline for the circulation element update?
I don't have a timeline right now on the circulation element. It'll be coming, obviously, our priority is the housing element to get that certified. We're also doing our land use alternatives right now, which, Mr. Cottrell, I was just looking, if you go onto bakersfield2045.com, if you haven't, I believe our survey ends today. We'll try to get that open, if it opens back up or we can get comments to us. So we're working on that element right now, and then we will be moving into the other elements, such as circulation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That was my question. Mr. Strickland and then Mr. Coleman, do you have something? And then Mr. Coleman afterward.
Yeah, sorry, the button disappeared for me. I just had a couple of questions. Well, we did, these are unrelated. I just had a couple of questions to kind of fill in what was asked about. Mr. Neptune had asked, he's asked a couple of times on this discussion about floor flexibility for the zoning. Is that a hard-coded flexibility? I think an example he had mentioned before was, you know, if he's one dwelling short of an R3 zone or an R4 density, is that flexible or is it truly a hard fixed floor?
You know, we will work with developers, but I can say HCD has floor minimums or density minimums per acre that we want to follow so that way we can credit for different affordability types of housing.
Got it. And then just to confirm on the timeline for this adoption, if we make a decision today, it goes to City Council in two weeks for first reading, two weeks after that for second reading, and then 31 days later for adoption. So we're about two months out, is that right?
Tonight, you will be making a recommendation to City Council. They will have the final decision. Right now, that is tentatively scheduled first reading on February 29th. Second reading would be March 13th, and it takes effect 30 days after. And with 31 days in March, that would be April 12th, a Friday, when these ordinance revisions would go into effect.
Got it.
February 28th, excuse me.
Got it. And then I guess the last question was, you know, the discussion around, if a state bill comes out requiring electric parking and housing, that would obviously be adopted within a future update, right? Even though nothing like that exists technically today, if that were a state requirement that you had to put in one charging station per house, that'd be something we'd update to reflect eventually, right?
Yes, and I'll just quickly look at it. Our parking standard, as is being proposed and recommended for revisions, includes a statement that pursuant to Government Code, Section 658, 63.2F, and relevant sections of the California Government Code as amended from time to time, this reduction, or I should say, this elimination of parking minimums shall not reduce, eliminate, or preclude the enforcement of any requirement imposed on a new multifamily residential to provide electric vehicle supply, equipment, installed parking spaces or parking spaces that are accessible to persons with disabilities that would have otherwise applied to the development of this section. In other words, if state law comes and says you shall require, it will be required. Right now, if you're going to provide one parking space, you will be required to provide the sufficient ADA and EV spaces also.
Thank you, Director Johnson.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Chair Barcier-Tash. I'm just kind of going through here, okay? So there were some things that were raised by the Kern County Policy Advocates from the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. That's a long title, but... And in the staff response, you proposed, and I guess I'm addressing this to Mr. Johnson, staff proposed additional amendments to Title 17. Have those been included in the proposed ordinance change? And have they been vetted by everybody that needs to vet it?
Those, excuse me, those meetings that occurred with LCGA and staff, those comments were residentially focused. So it's part, it would be considered part of what we're doing with this zoning ordinance update. They are, some of the changes that we're making are in compliance with state law, a requirement of state law. Some of them are needed just for clarification purposes. And some of them would be to, like, one of the items was to add farm labor housing in agricultural zone. We already allow single-family homes in the ag zone. So adding farm labor housing to the agricultural zone is, you know, almost common sense. I would also note that as I was preparing, setting up here on the dais, that we did receive another letter from the LCGA. I have not had the opportunity to review that letter. So their comments in that letter, we will address with City Council between now and City Council.
Okay, thank you. And the new MX zone, do you foresee that being used a lot? Or what is the anticipation for that zone?
Well, the anticipation for a mixed-use zone, whether it's MX1 or MX2, would be to have a mix of commercial and residential. Do we see, do we anticipate? We at least want to provide the option for it.
You're doing a new zoning map. Is there any properties that are being zoned for that in this new map?
You will see that at the February 29th meeting. Yes, there are.
Also on the, Mr. Boyle's presentation, he talks about the 10 acres for PD zone. Is that a minimum or what is that?
Yes, that would be to apply the PD zone. It would require a parcel or development of 10 acres or more.
So if we're changing the density, generally, the reason we do PDs is to get the higher density most of the time. And so how do those two work together?
So you're correct. A lot of times, we have PD zones either get higher density or more often than not, it's to request a deviation from one of the development standards. With our new zoning that we have in place, some of the proposed changes will eliminate the need for PD plans to come in, such as, as Mr. Neptune noted, that he had a PD plan that was approved within the last three months. Some of those requests were for smaller lot size, reduced setbacks, all of which are now addressed and will be allowed by right. So the need for a PD zone may not necessarily be required.
And then there's a note in there about the removal of parking zone. What is a parking zone?
There are several areas within the city that have a P parking zone. And one of them that everybody should probably be aware of is in front of Valley Plaza Mall. And the reason for having that parking zone there was to prevent any buildings from being constructed that would block the view of the mall. That's why that one is there. There's some parking zones along F Street behind some of the buildings there that are owned by parking associations. And then 10 is just to provide additional parking. And there's some large open fields of parking that maybe could be considered for even additional parking garages in the downtown F Street area. So it's for parking only.
I don't remember from your spreadsheet, but can those people that are in the parking business still operate in these other zones?
Yes, absolutely. Those would be considered legal non-conforming. So that P zone, parking zone, would remain. It's just that if they wanted to develop it at a future time, they would need to come in and do a zone change. So we're not removing the P zone. We're just basically preventing P zones in the future.
Okay, and to Mr. Strickland's question, he asked about the floors. And I think that that's come up in some other dialogue before for some of the speakers, for Blaine Neptune and some other people I've talked to about this. So the floors are basically state mandated, is what you're saying, right? Or HCD mandated?
The HCD establishes minimum densities to be considered for low-income and very low-income housing. And that being, if I'm not mistaken, 20 dwelling units an acre is considered low-income, 30 dwelling units an acre is considered very low-income. Hence, we have those zone districts with those floors.
So... This is probably a question from Mr. Boyle, but, Mr. Johnson, you can answer it if you want. I'm just trying to get my mind around this no parking requirement. No parking mandated. It's expected that the developers are going to be responsible, and they're going to provide some form of parking. But let's just take a typical, you know, 30-unit project. And there's no, there's no parking requirement under the new ordinance. And... Currently, there's two parking spaces per unit required on multifamily with two bedrooms or more. In this case, there would be none. And let's just say, let's say that the developer is reasonably responsible and goes, oh, I can't build it without any parking, but I'm going to build with one parking space per unit. Knowing that people have more vehicles per household than less, where do they expect the other 30 parking spaces to be? If we're not going to provide any parking facilities for people?
That would be up to the developer.
Not really. You're saying they don't have to provide parking?
That's correct.
So they're providing one per unit? And so the other 30 people are going to have to park somewhere else? And where's that going to be?
That would be up for the developer.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. That's a good question, Mr. Coleman. Let's explore that.
If, if in a free-market society, a developer builds something, 30 units, and provides one parking stall per unit, and I have four cars, I'm probably not going to rent there. That's the expectation when you allow the market to drive, drive what a developer does or doesn't do. And my experience as a planner for 30 years or 25 years is that the market, the developer does a pretty good job being responsive to the market. So as an example of that, I'll use the Greyhound bus station, which didn't get redeveloped. There's the cost constraint there with the desire in terms of height and having to build a concrete platform. But that developer looked at parking on that site, which was going to be six floors, six floors high. And for some of the units, units that were interior to the site or on lower floors, only a single parking stall was provided. In other cases, for larger bedrooms, a prospective tenant would be allowed two parking stalls. Or additional stalls were allowed for individual people to specifically rent that stall as a part of their rental agreement. In other words, to monetize parking as a commodity in a particular subdivision. So I look at it in terms of the, this step forward is to allow the market to determine how many stalls based on the product that's being offered. If that developer only provides one parking stall, yet targets an audience of prospective renters with only, that typically will have two cars, they're going to have an egregious vacancy rate and probably not want to do that again. So when you're putting millions of dollars into a development, you want to make sure that it provides the minimum qualifications that you're building to. So do we see, do we see parking standards? Or do we see developments taking on situations where they're grossly underparked? We don't, because there's a lot of money involved with the development of an apartment complex. At the same time, some of the arguments are that, well, we have, people use their garages for man caves and pool tables and the like. And so consequently, or you have three families living in a particular home, and there's six cars there. We don't see the market building additional stalls for those particular uses. So there's a, there's a common sense that comes into play here. The developer shouldn't be required to build for the potential misuse of a garage or the potential of three families occupying a single unit. But that's out of the realm of their conceptual understanding of how much parking would be required. But a developer, and I could speak to Mr. Cater, being one of those developers, developer does measure very carefully the requirements that a particular project should satisfy in terms of providing for parking. That said, Mr. Johnson went in and looked at how many times someone asked for a parking reduction, because we do have zoning modifications that provide for reductions in parking. Over the last 20 years, there were four requests for parking reductions in 20 years' time. Because the developer understands what's required to have a successful project. And part of that is provision of parking. Now, over time, if our city becomes more multimodal, provides more, more high-quality transit corridors, and the need for a vehicle in the city of Bakersfield is somewhat mitigated, then we may see the developer be reactive to that and provide less stalls over time. But I just don't see that developer coming in and doing something that would make their project unviable, like not placing any parking on a multifamily lot. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will only have five minutes to speak. So make sure your comments, or make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comment has a chance to do so. We will have rebuttal for those in favor first. Anyone? In opposition? I will now close the public hearing on the item and return to commission for comment and action. You're going to have to just, yeah. Vice Chair Cater?
Thank you. It's exciting to see the progress made in moving towards an adoption of a revised zoning ordinance. And I want to thank staff. I want to thank all the community members that came to the various hearings, the commission, the council, looking at how we adapt our standards and requirements to the needs of our community and the mandate from our state. I think generally, I, Mr. Boyle, I appreciate your presentation. I feel like a few more times I would be able to give your presentation. So let's get this thing through. But I, I like some of the, I like a lot of what it does. I guess my comment that would be more of a comment than a, is just your statement of leading and not following. I, I think that that is a very proactive statement that changes maybe traditionally how we've looked at planning. One proposal within this zoning modification that to me feels kind of a back step from that is taking residential out of a permitted use or out of a conditionally permitted use within a C1 and a C2 zone. I think you could argue with this new ordinance, it is more challenging for a developer of a commercial site to integrate housing than it would have been in our previous issue. And if this was all began with a proactive policy to promote housing and housing creativity, I would just, I would just state that I think preserving C1 and C2 by removing residential as an allowance feels like taking an opportunity to create a mixed-use model throughout our city and relegates it to a few zones which... our city and relegates it to a few zones, which may appear in a few sites in the new zoning map, otherwise require a developer to elect into it. And I would just, I don't know if, Ms. King, I was just curious if the comments made tonight are just co-related in a comment format for the viewing of council or if we can add recommendations to, as we move things along? What's the best appropriate?
Yes, Commissioner Kater, you can definitely add recommendations in addition to your recommendation of approval or denial, whatever it may be. And we can add those recommendations to the administrative report that goes to City Council in two weeks.
Thank you. So, I mean, I feel weird saying this without allowing the other commissioners, but I mean, I am excited to move this along to council. And again, this is a legislative action, so I look forward to the council, our elected representatives, to make the final language and the final package of this with the note of a recommendation to explore language that allows residential to be a part of a commercial project within a C1 and C2 without going through the zone change process. I don't know if I can keep it vague, because again, this is more legislative than advisory, but, Mr. Johnson?
I think my only follow-up on that would be exploring those options would mean, without a zone change, would mean either with a CUP or without a CUP. Is there a preference to throw, to have discretion or to have no discretion?
Well, and that would be a question for staff, because I know part of the mandates from HCD are to kind of remove discretionary review and streamline housing as a by right. And so to me, I would lean on staff and our elected officials to, I think the conditional process works as we currently have it. But I would ask your question with a question, do you feel like the conditional use is a, gives the city the review tools that it needs moving forward?
For residential in commercial, if I had to answer right now, I would say a CUP does not, because once you grant that CUP and the residential is constructed on that commercial site, to revoke a CUP would not, would not happen.
And so would that change? Because I do think the language has changed a lot. I mean, I would, I would recommend wording that allows a percentage of the project to be comprised of residential while keeping at least part of the site a commercial nature and character without having to go through that zone change.
I understand.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
That would be my only comment. Otherwise, thank you again for the presentation and I will, and I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with that recommendation? Is that the right?
In additional recommendations.
Additional recommendations regarding C1 and C2.
Commissioner Shirkland?
I just had a question to tie onto that. How is that different than an MX1, MX2 zone? Isn't that kind of the intention of those? Does that allow for mixed-use residential?
It does allow, but to, to change zone, you're required to go through a zone change and a zone amendment. And so it's just a more arduous process. I do, I do think, you know, another explorer is how, how do we allow developers to move more freely between the mixed-use and the C1 and the C2? It just comes back to me, the concept of leading versus following is, we have a path to it, but it's a more difficult path. So if we already allow a simpler path, taking that away feels going away from housing, not towards housing. Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank all the staff and Director Boyle, especially for all the work they've put into this. Thanks for the comments and support and especially in opposition, thanks for coming out, Mr. Cottrell. You know, it's not always easy to talk in opposition when everyone else in here is probably super on board with this. So hopefully you do reach out to Director Johnson, the city, for what they were talking about. I think that's super helpful. And I'm going to withhold a motion until Director, or Commissioner Coleman has a chance.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Tash. Yeah. I want, I want to reiterate the appreciation for the, for the whole project. I mean, this is a very, very complicated thing. And I like the way it's presented and, you know, the graphic format and it's a lot easier to read than the multiple other ordinances we had for the, the deal of the same thing. So I like all that, the simplification. I know it was a hard project to get done in a short amount of time. So I want to, I want to thank you, Mr. Boyle, your staff and the planning staff for, for doing that. I am a little concerned about this rush to approve. And, you know, we're, it was said last time that, that we heard this presentation and again tonight, that, you know, we're not in compliance and, you know, if we don't approve it, we'll be, continue to be out of compliance and may suffer some penalty. I'm a little concerned about have that being, that burden on us when, you know, we didn't even hear this presentation until after the first of the year. So that, that concerns me a lot. And I know that we need to work together as a city to, to catch up with some of the shortcomings from before, but I'm troubled by that somewhat. I am still hung up on this parking thing. And Mr. Boyle gave an example of how a developer might solve the problem when I proposed a, an example or scenario. But I, I think that that's, it doesn't really address how people behave. And what, what I'm concerned about is we have a residential development and then we have another lot next to it, which is a 30 or 40-unit apartment building. And if they have, don't have adequate parking, the people are going to park on the residential streets in the residential neighborhood. And we're already cutting back on parking in the residential neighborhood. And so I've heard this said before that, that, you know, well, the market's going to take care of it. Well, this assumes that developers will do more than what's expected and what's required. And that is not generally our, what we're seeing when projects come to the, to the Planning Commission. Either, and, and some of the people that are here tonight, you know, they bring in projects that are the minimum. It's like, this is the minimum it's required, that's what we're doing. We heard from Mr., Mr. Moore, you know, complaints about the misuse of the garages and then the developers looking at the return on investment. And so they're looking to cut those spots. And I get that, but you can't assume that the people aren't going to be there parking more vehicles, you know? It's not one, one vehicle per household anymore. It's two, three, four vehicles per household. And those vehicles aren't going to disappear just because you'd like it to. And so I'm, I'm still very concerned about that. I think it's irresponsible to have, to get rid of all residential parking requirements that we don't have a comprehensive parking plan in the city of Bakersfield. We have no plan to build parking garages or convert, you know, some property for parking for, we have none of that. We don't have the, the, the mass transit, transit infrastructure that, that you would need to have to do that. And I know there's plans to get that kind of stuff, but that's a 20- or 30-year plan. So I'm a little concerned about that. You know, all the stuff that I read from the state that addresses, addresses the parking issue and, you know, they, they talk about, you know, abolishing parking requirements, whatever, all refer to urban parking. And, you know, urban is a very small part of the city of Bakersfield at this point. And most of it's suburban. And so I'd like to see us have some, if we want to single out some zones or, you know, set aside areas that, that we can do that, I, I just struggle with that. And I don't know that I can support that with no parking requirement for all residential zones. I think that, you know, you heard from the HomeBuild Association of Kern County, they expressed some interest, I don't think interest, but some concerns, although they're supportive of the project as a whole, I think they have some of the same concerns in our more suburban areas, you know? So if we want to do something in the downtown that makes sense, that's great, but to, to then transfer that out to the suburbia, suburbia, I struggle with. So I have some other issues, but I won't get into all those because I think I'm just droning on now. So anyway, back to, thank you very much, Mr. Boyle and your staff for, we're truly a hard project and, and making it as clear as possible for us. So thank you. So anyway, I wanted to say, I, I don't know if we can, if we can have some dialogue about the, the parking issue and whether that's a concern to any other commissioners.
Yeah, personally for me, I, I don't have a hangup on it. I, I, I agree. I think in suburban areas, I don't see not building a two-car garage and, you know, even 6,000-square-foot lots, I don't, I don't see that not happening. Downtown, I think you probably would see some reduction in parking eventually, but I do have at least a little faith that the developers would do something sensical. And I also don't think it's going to be something so quickly that we don't have time to work on that development plan for parking and for other options. So I personally don't have an issue with the parking standard as written.
I was thinking the same thing, and I go back and forth a little bit too, but I just think if a map set comes to the Planning Commission and they're looking to create this giant new residential parking or apartment situation in the middle of a neighborhood with no parking, I would hope that the planning commissioners would be able to look at that just like we are today and say, hey, you know, this is probably going to muck up the neighborhood pretty bad, because these people are all going to park in those, those neighborhoods around that or, but I, you know, I, I, yeah, I don't, yeah. I, I think that-
I think my concern is we're not going to see those. You know, a lot of it's going to be permitted by you, by right.
What I think this, oh, sorry. I do think, you know, one statement when we talked about it a couple of weeks ago is a big move like this takes, it's, it's in the details of whether it works or not. And so for me, I do think some of the questions, you know, are, is a city going to be more accountable to system-wide study of cars and movement in the city? Are we going to be able to analyze impacted neighborhoods versus non-impacted neighborhoods? I mean, to me, I think the city and the developer are partners in working through what's best for the community. So are we still going to be a resource for recommended practices even if we're not requiring? You know, just, I think that to me, it's just making sure that the city isn't, we made the statement, now we're done. But if we're going to change the way we do things, it needs to be, it needs to be, yeah, fully vetted. And so does the circulation element cover parking? Is that one of the elements of the circulation element?
It doesn't necessarily cover parking and, it, it, it covers parking.
Mobility?
It's, right, correct. And I would urge developers, commissioners, any member of the public that has an interest in circulation throughout the city, whether it be, be on arterial or collector or local or even private road, that they get involved in that. We, you know, we've done a lot of outreach with our general plan update and to be honest, some of the feedback we receive is not as much as you would expect from a city this size. And so circulation is going to be a big part of this update and it's how the city grows. And we will need involvement with the circulation element of the city, whether that's reducing road widths or whatnot.
Looking for more comment or a second to Mr. Kater's motion?
I will second Mr. Kater's motion.
So what is Mr. Kater's motion?
Mr. Kater's motion is to approve the text amendments to Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17 as revised with the recommendation for options to allow residential in the C1 and C2 zone and recommend the same to City Council. And within that report that we give to City Council, I will summarize like the percentage we're talking about, making it potentially different options, whether it's by right, if you have a certain percentage residential versus a certain percentage commercial. I believe that's where you're going, Commissioner Kater.
Well, and I think there's, yeah, there's an objective way, there's a discretionary review way, so whatever staff feels is most appropriate moving forward.
And we will present that to City Council, but if I'm not mistaken, that would be your recommend, or your motion.
Good job. I think it captures it well. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So now we'll vote?
Motion passes with Commissioners Biddle, Corr, and Neal absent.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, reports.
So we have two reports to give tonight. Our first one will be by our Planning Commissioner Larry Coleman on the League of California Cities. I believe you should have a handout of his slides also that you can follow along and take notes.
Oh, it's there.
So, hello. Chair Bashir Tash and Commissioners. Can you hear me on this microphone? I can't hear myself, so, is this working? All right, great. Thank you. I wanted to take a minute to introduce you to the League of California Cities. I know that some of you are familiar with them, some of you are not. So I wanted to take a minute to just introduce League of Cities, what is League of Cities about and League of California Cities and, and how it affects us as planning commissioners. So I just kind of wanted to provide an overview of the California city structure, the department structure and the role in California cities, how we can be more engaged and how it relates to, to the planning department. Currently, I serve on the Planning and Community Development Department Committee with the League of California Cities. I'm second vice president and I'm also the department rep for the Community Services Policy Committee. And what that committee does is it makes recommendations to the League of California Cities that eventually will transpire to legislative recommendations and those kind of things and what the league supports and what it doesn't support. The, the mission of California, California cities is to expand and protect local control for cities through education and advocacy to enhance quality of life for all Californians. This is kind of why California, why CalCities is important. And then we're talking about why you should be involved. It's, it's, it's very important to bring all the communities together and share all the ideas that the various cities have and to have one voice in dealing with the state and other issues that come up. In 2024, the CalCities priorities are to protect and expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness. You know, we've all heard about the budget cuts and so far we're, most of that homeless money is protected, at least for this year. And the CalCities will, League of Cities will continue to, to advocate on behalf of keeping that money flowing, to keep the programs up that we've created over the last couple of years. To increase the supply and affordability of housing while retaining local decision-making. You know, Mr. Boyle- You know, Mr. Boyle showed you on this slide of all the different laws that were passed in one fiscal year, and that legislature just keeps turning them out. And 2023 was probably just as bad as 2022. And so it's a constant battle to maintain our local decision-making rights. And even when we talk to people in large cities, they even say, hey, we want to be, we want to decide for ourselves. And they understand that what works in Bakersfield doesn't work in their community and vice versa. And so we want to try to protect local decision-making as much as possible. Also to improve public safety in California communities, a big priority. You know, we're all faced with rampant crime and violence in our communities that we've never experienced before. And so we want to continue to advocate for additional protection and money to solve some of these problems. And to safeguard essential local revenues and support fiscal sustainability. I can't say that word quickly, but fiscal sustainability. You know, we've all seen it where the state comes around and tries to get money that we normally get for ourselves. We all saw the redevelopment agencies go away because we had figured out a way to fund a lot of our redevelopment through future growth. We would say we would be able to keep, you know, the property tax increase. We'd be able to keep that and use that for future development. Well, the state come in, oh, there's a big pot of money, we'll take that away. And so we're, the League of California Cities works very hard to try to protect the individual cities and communities and keep our money where we need it. A little bit about the internal structure of California cities, and I apologize that the slide is so small. It looked real big on my screen in my office when I was doing this. So it's been about 20 years since I had to do a PowerPoint presentation, so I had to relearn how to make some of these things. So basically, CalCities has six internal departments, legislative, which is the biggest one, administrative services, public affairs, communications, education, conferences, and general counsel. We're probably, as commissioners, most familiar with the education and the conferences in terms of our planning academies that occur from time to time. But there's about 60 CalCities staff, and then there's countless other volunteers, board members, and committees. The, it's a little graphic. I figure you need to have a graph, so that's what they told me. So anyway, these committees all work together. Legislative has seven policy committees, and I mentioned earlier that I serve on one of those, which is community services, which is, you know, police and fire and aging services and those kinds of things. And there's other, other committees that address the entire spectrum of things that the cities and the counties are concerned about. There's one for the police, and there's one for firefighters, and there's several. So the one that mostly pertains to us is the Planning and Community Development Department. And the Planning and Community Development Department supports our, the planners, basically. Planning Commissioners and Community Development Professionals are member cities. Department hosts business meetings, so it's a way for them to share best practices. We have webinars and monthly meetings that are open to anybody that's, that serves in an official capacity. So you don't have to become a member of the League of Cities to be able to do. You just have to be, say, I'm a planning commissioner in Bakersfield, and you can sign up and get on that. And a lot happens in those. You know, it's mostly informative. You get a legislative update, what's going on currently, what's new bills coming up. One of the big ones they're starting to talk about now is we went through the whole ADUs, right? Well, now they're looking at CDUs, commercial. Yeah, commercials, well, I don't know exactly how to say that. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So there's no legislation yet, but it's being talked about. And so, so we get to talk about these things before they become law sometimes, and you can see them coming and respond to them. One of the ones we talked about today was electric fence requirements. Didn't know there was a, didn't know there was a requirement on it. But apparently, there is. And they're trying to now say when and when we can't control the use of electric fences. And primarily, they want to be able to approve electric fences around commercial industrial properties and those kinds of things. It's being promoted by the electric fence industry, but they're getting a little bit of traction from the state legislatures to allow some of that by right and take away some of the control of the city to say, nah, not in that application. So, but the point is, is that when you're able to participate in these discussions early on, it gives us a chance to know about them, and it gives us a chance to voice our concerns through the League of California Cities. But it also gives you guys an opportunity to then go talk to your representatives about your concerns about those things. Some of the benefits that are available to you is a subscription to the Western Cities Magazine, which is a newsletter put on by the California Cities Advocate. It's actually not a handout newsletter anymore. It's an online deal. Access to the CalCities Department listserv, and that's what I was talking about in terms of a, basically a bulletin board where people can share best practices. Because the planning director from one community might say, hey, we're going to be putting out an RFP for a specific thing, and does anybody have an example of how that should work? And so it allows them to share best practices. And then you have the opportunity to attend exclusive CalCities webinars and roundtables. And one of the ones that we're going to be coming up with, that they are going to be coming up with in the next year is council on aging. You know, our population in California is aging in a bigger area. Yeah, I'm right there with them. But there's a lot of concerns about services and monies and those kinds of things for aging. So there's a lot of things to know about and learn. This is kind of a little roadmap to how you can get involved. And I'm sorry again for the size of the slide. I said it looked great on my monitor at the office. But basically, you can get involved at any level you want. If you just want to attend monthly conference calls, you know, right up to participation in, in policy committees, up to serving on the various boards in the League of California Cities. I was supposed to add a link in here for the listserv, and I failed to do that. But I'll go ahead and email you guys that link if you want to get on the listserv. Some of you may already be on it, but I'll send it to you anyway. This is some ways that members can engage in the process. We talked about the roundtables, the webinar, webinars, and just general discussions. It gives an opportunity for planning commissioners and planning staff to be able to talk about various things in different communities and learn that, you know, we're all a lot the same, and we're all a lot different. So I found that to be very educational to me. This is what you guys mostly know the League of Cities for, is the Planning Commissioner Academy. And we have one coming up. You should all have a package on your desk provided by Mr. Johnson and his staff, which is your reservation to your hotel and a little bit of the agenda for what's going to be happening. Dates are March 6th to the 8th, and I think we discussed earlier, you can check in on the 5th. And it's a, if those of you haven't been before, it's very, very educational. The first few years I was on the planning commission, we didn't have that. And we're like, man, and then all of a sudden, we got measure-in money, and we were able to then start going to this. And I was like, my God, this is what we needed, because a lot of what goes on there really applies to you. And I'm looking more at you, but I know you guys have been, maybe been before. But I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about what to expect at the Planning Commissioners Academy. This year, we're changing it up a little bit on the speaker. Last year, we had Berkey Brown. He was talking about, as a keynote speaker, he was talking about navigating change without losing focus. And I think we came away with a sense that, great presentation, great speaker, but didn't have much to do with what we're there for. And so this year, we were inviting Sheri Elise. She's, she called herself America's Joy Magnet. She's a TV talk show host and motivational speaker. And mostly, she's going to talk about the joy in being wrong and embracing the power of a new perspective. And this is something that's important for us, because, you know, you saw right here in this presentation, we don't always get our way. And so we have to be able to, you know, communicate, and we need, have to be able to make our point and still conduct our business and let it go at the end. You know, we don't need to have ongoing feuds. I use this as an example. This happened to the city council a few years ago when we talked about the Navigation Center. The Navigation Center on Brundage Lane was very controversial, and there was a lot of back and forth, and about as many people wanted it as didn't want it. And the council really had a tough decision to make. And some of the significant council people, they voted against that. And the other ones voted for it, and it passed by a narrow margin. What I was impressed by is although they were divided, the very next issue on the agenda was financing money to fix the roads and do the improvements and everything else that was needed over there. And that passed unanimously, because they moved on from the dispute over whether we're doing it or not, and then got together on, let's, okay, we've proved that now, we're going to move forward. And I think that's real important, that we need to be able to accept that maybe we weren't wrong, but, but maybe the group went the different way. And so we think that she's going to be able to contribute a lot to that discussion. I think she'll be very entertaining. And then, of course, the key components of the Planning Commissioner Academy are all the classes that are available to us. And again, this year, we'll have a CEQA basic class. We'll have a program on managing public meetings in a contentious era. We'll have a class on, this is a Planning Commissioner Academy, so it'll be nuts and bolts of planning right from the beginning. And then some emerging issues, and of course, a network reception, networking reception at the end. At some point, I'm a moderator of one of these things. I'm going to have to read the agenda because I, I got to make sure I show up the right place. I'm not known for moderation, so that'll be an interesting challenge for me. And I'm sure Ms. King will be there to make sure I don't say anything inappropriate. So then, the next day was a whole day of programs. How is the streamlining of housing laws redefine the role of planning commission? And I think that's, we all have the same question. Is all these state mandated laws, what's the point of us, right? And so there'll be some more discussion about that. I think it's going to be worthwhile for everybody. And then the relationship between planning commission, city council, and planning staff. We don't really talk about that very often, but what is that? How does that dynamic, and how do we maintain it? This, this commission seems to get along pretty well with staff, but I've worked with other communities where staff and commission don't always see eye to eye. I actually had a, I tell this story, it's been long enough ago, long enough ago that those people aren't still there. But in a community in Northern California, I, we actually had a small little development of 30 or 40 single-family lots. And it was a difficult fit, and they made us get rid of some and that kind of thing. And, and we just couldn't get past planning staff. Every time we presented some to the planning staff, they'd have some obstacle that we had to hurdle they got to get over. And we eventually just said, okay, this is our best plan. Submit it. It'll either get denied or it'll get approved, but this is the one we want to submit. And they submitted it and went to planning commission. Planning staff objected to it. Planning commission approved it anyway. We were like, hey, we're golden, right? Well, you know, like our projects, once the planning commission rules, it goes to city council for ratification. And here, pretty much a rubber stamp most of the time. Well, there, planning staff showed up and objected to the plan, right? And so we're like, well, you know, who's driving the boat? You know, is it the commission, or is it staff, or the city council, or what? So anyway, how does, how do the commissioners and the council and the staff work together to accomplish the things we're trying to do? So I think that's worth talking about. And of course, an advanced program for ONCEQA for the people that have a little bit of exposure to it. Little Planning Commissioner Jeopardy, which we had last year, was a lot of fun. It was done in a Jeopardy kind of format during lunch hour. It was, it's really a fun thing to do, a lot of little team building kind of thing. And then, again, becoming an effective commissioner, and then some other items regarding how to be a planning commissioner. And so I just want to make a mention, actually, all the women commissioners are absent. So I was making an, I was making an observation about on the Friday, that we have a legislative update, which is very good, because it goes through all the pending legislation and where they're at with stuff and that kind of thing. But the closing remarks are going to be done by Anita Gutierrez from the city of Pomona. She's, she's, she's the, I'm sorry, she's the VP, she's the first VP of the Planning Development Department. She's also the Planning Community Development Department Director of Development Services and Acting City Manager of Pomona. And she's a PhD candidate, much like our former assistant, Ms. Gail. So I like, that's just pretty dynamic, and she's a very good speaker too. So that'll be fun to hear from her. So, and then, of course, our training opportunities that we always have, there's one at the beginning and one at the end, which is the Ethics and the Harassment Training. The ethics is required every two years, I'm sorry, yeah, every two years. And so I'm going to have to do that this year because my two years are up. So I'll be attending that one on the Wednesday morning. And then there's also the harassment training available in, at the end of the program. So that kind of just summarizes what's going on at the academy, and it just gave me an opportunity to come up and talk to you about League of California Cities. And I just hope that you guys will take the opportunity to explore what the League of Cities can do for you and what you can do for the League of Cities. So, thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. And I'd like to thank Ms. Elise for preparing those packets for you. If you just go through them, if you have any questions, be sure to reach out to myself or Ms. Elise. Our next item that we have was a request from your commission for a presentation on the Transformative Climate Communities, or TCC, plan. And there's no one better than Jason Kater, our Economic and Community Development Manager, to present that. I would also note that I believe one of his slides, there'll be a picture of a great mixed-use project, the Baker Street Village. I believe that's in there. That's a, that's a great mixed-use project that was approved within this last year or so.
Back in July, yep.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kater.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Commissioners. As Director Johnson mentioned, my name is Jason Kater. I work in the Economic and Community Development Department in the city of Bakersfield. Glad to be back here. I think I was back here before your commission about two years ago when we had early discussions about the affordable housing strategy. And so always good when our department can come to Development Services, who generally runs these, these means around design concepts, and talk about the work we do. So as a referral to our department, we're here to provide an update on the TCC program we recently recommended for funding, also known as Southeast Strong. So we'll talk about the name and some of the components of the work that we did there. So as a background, you may have heard this acronym. So as a background, you may have heard this acronym if you followed some of the work we're doing. What does TCC stand for? As Director Johnson mentioned, TCC is an acronym for Transformative Climate Communities. It is a program that is focused on community led development that seeks to support communities in achieving environmental health and economic impacts with a target on focusing their investments in some of those disadvantaged parts of the state of California. We'll talk about what that methodology means. But in short, it's basically a grant program similar to, as Commissioner Coleman talked earlier about the RDA days, a way to really invest some significant funding in areas that are distressed and disadvantaged. And so the model they use is to really focus on this community led partnership driven model where applicants partner with local residents, community entities, CBOs, to kind of build this vision for what they want to see this community look like and then go after dollars to implement those programs. The program has been around for about seven years now, it's passed under AB 2722 and has three different funding components. So it really is a continuing program you can get involved in. First, they fund planning grants. So that is a methodology for kind of starting the framework for going after TCC funding, identifying partners, potential projects, eligible uses, who are some different programmatic pieces you can bring in to kind of bring this cohesion. The new model product development grants, so there's a lot of upfront work to get these projects from concept to being ready for grant application. A lot of the work we do in our department is really going after the dollars from the policies that you all see here. The affordable housing world that Director Boyle talked about earlier is very familiar to us on the capital side. We work consistently with Stephen Pells and the Housing Authority and other affordable housing developers to kind of bring those projects to fruition. And then lastly, the largest piece of TCC, implementation grants, where you actually get capital funding to actually build out some of these proposed projects for improvements in these communities. TCC has a framework that's generally revolves around pollution reduction strategies, reducing greenhouse gas emissions in their investment. So within this list here, you can see 11 different project strategies that they'll fund. So just kind of go over a few highlights briefly. The top item there, which Director Johnson mentioned earlier about the senior center project we'll we'll show you today. Equitable housing, so focusing on affordable housing development in a sense, Commissioner Coleman, I know you have RDA experience, gap financing to help those projects. Opportunities for transit access and mobility, so bike lane pedestrian improvements, also mobility enhancements, things like car share programs, electrification of local fleet buses, urban greening, so looking at tree planting, community gardens, even down to newer things like community microgrids where you help with energy residency for like community service facilities by doing solar improvements behind the meter, if you will. So there's a lot of different ways you can fund really impacts in the community with these dollars. So we, in addition to that, there's this piece called transformative elements. So you have your projects and you also have community engagement, investments in workforce, leverage funding. This source does require a 50% match. So if you're going for $35 million, you need $17 and a half million to leverage it. That's that's where a lot of the time actually takes to prepare one of these applications. And then also things like data collection and collection, how do you tell your story and the impact you've made? Then also, how does it relate to greenhouse gas emission reductions and climate adaptation? So where did the city start? And where did we end up and how where are we going? It's kind of the question we want to talk about tonight. So in 2019, as you mentioned earlier about the planning grant funding, we received a planning grant from TCC to begin this process of getting geared up ultimately for implementation funds and development. We began with the area you see here, the red outline. Under programmatic requirements, you have to identify a five square mile area as your investment. There's also census tract requirements. So again, back to our conversation earlier about the policy of the program investing in the most disadvantaged impacted census tracts in the state of California, they use a tool called Calenviron Screen, which is this really complicated system that has 13 different metrics that they assign scores to you based on like income level, pollution burden, health outcomes, and then all these census tracts are scored against each other and then assigned a percentile of how like impacted they are on these metrics. Within TCC, you have to focus on the top 75% of those tracks. And so that's how these maps kind of come together. Also, things like having a nexus to high speed rail, if you're a high speed rail city, is part of how you build out this planning grant application. So we started in 2019, you see the name Revitalizing Downtown Bakersfield. There's some emphasis early on about looking at downtown, old town, and starting to look in the southeast. As we went through this process, that name started to devolve from 2019 to 2022. The name was Building a Better Bakersfield. And this process from the get go was really informed with residents, involvement, stakeholder engagement. A lot of the comments we were hearing early on was about focusing in the most impacted census tracts for Calenviron. A lot of the community members we heard from were really emphasizing the southeast. And that was something we kept hearing, kept hearing. This application was submitted, you can see here on the left, a map that kind of focused in downtown and started to go into southeast where you see California and Chester, kind of beginning with the concept of going again in round five for a more focused map in in the southeast. And then here were some of those initial projects. That round was not funded by TCC. And so we went, you know, round one, did not succeed in 2022, got some comments back. Generally, low GHG scores, but a lot of it also around stakeholder engagement and process. And how are you really building an image, excuse me, a blueprint for community transformative change and how are residents involved in this decision process? And so that was kind of what we took back as a team. We regeared up for round five. And so that began back in January 2023, so about 13 months ago. We reconvened about 34 different individuals consisting of nonprofits, government partners, residents to kind of look at what we have done so far in those last four years and evaluate preparing for round five in this upcoming application. And from that, we began hosting monthly steering committees. So for those who can see that photo there may recognize that's the Bakersfield Senior Center on Fourth and P Street. That became our meeting space for these these residents, these nonprofits, government officials to start really working around forming projects, forming programs to go after these dollars. This group began, again, meeting monthly, near the end, bimonthly. They became the guiding process for our voting selection process for projects, working on those transformative elements. They became the foundation of the Stakeholder Oversight Group and then also were the ones who were instrumental in community engagement from beyond that process. Through this process, this has definitely been a process for the city, we rebranded from Building a Better Bakersfield to Southeast Strong. The name of the application came from the residents that we engaged. And we said, okay, we're going to focus this effort in the southeast. What's a name that we should pick for this application? Southeast Strong was what came from the residents. And it really became kind of a it really had a lot of impact. It really became something that we really gathered around and saw as instrumental for what we as a city were going to hope to achieve, but what residents really felt these funds could do. We came up with the acronym Sustainable, Transformative, Resilient, Opportunity, Network, and Growth. So that was the strong that came with southeast. But then also really felt that this really embodied this community's sense of resiliency despite some of the challenges that Southeast Bakersfield has continued to focus to face over the years. And so from there, we took this work, we went on like a three or four month process beginning in March to May. We hosted five in-person meetings, six online meetings, went to 15 community events that included churches, festival, meeting with community groups, hosted our own festival. We in total went to about 28 different locations and most of those were places where people were already gathering. Our goal with this program was to get into the fabric of the community and really hear from residents about what they thought were their priorities in these projects. And so you're going to we're going to go through some photos, but you can see everything from your upper left screen, that's a meeting we held at MLK Boulevard, excuse me, MLK Park, to leafleting at food donations and giveaways, to meetings at the senior center, to presenting at churches on Sunday, having bullets, literally having voting opportunities outside of churches where pastors let us come in and talk to their their congregation. The photo on the second to the right is one of my favorites. That's at Stern Park where they do Zumba Thursdays and Tuesdays in the park. So after they did their Zumba routine, we had our boards up and we got their votes and they put on community development. But that was really the level of this this effort. We wanted to go and and and, you know, while we always appreciate hearing from those who are really active in our processes, we wanted to go to the fabric where people were in the community and get their insight. And this is, as I'm going to echo Commissioner Coleman's statement earlier, this looked great on my computer earlier. It's a little hard now as we look at it. But we came up with a list of 23 projects and asked people to give us their top six priorities. There was a rank score. And then you can see there, those projects that they voted on ultimately came what informed our application. Earlier, going from projects, you can see this map here. So if we flip back briefly, what I think this program had a great success in is earlier applications had a a map that we drew as a city saying, here's how we think, you know, this is our concept to begin with. But when it came to application time, you have that map kind of in your in your mind. We we took what the residents voted on and basically redrew a map that really had some of those key components, but then really shifted to incorporate other areas. For example, there was really a discussion about Southeast Bakersfield also incorporating the areas along South Dr. Martin King Boulevard, so going out towards the Cap K Friendship House. So we stay within city limits for program guidelines and kind of the structure of the application, but found a way to shift some of that that area from up north down to really get into these communities. We had to keep the finger to high speed rail as a statutory requirement for the city we are. And in this focus, what we found was that kind of center area there that has a black hash around it was kind of like the core of the application. Going back to this, the Calenviron Screen scoring, top 75% of census tracts, we found that in this area, six of the top six of the 10 census tracts were in the top 95% in the state for impact. And the core, which is that little black hash area, there's three census tracts in there and those are all in the 98th, 99th percentile. And so this was a very impacted community per Calenviron Screen and consistent with the the focus that the state of California wanted for these dollars. So this map, again, harder to read, but kind of shows you how, you know, the the numbers you see here and the dots represent project locations and ideas, a real big synergy and nexus around Fourth and P Street where the senior center is, also investments going in towards Dr. Martin King Park and Dr. Martin King Boulevard. And so this this program, when it came down to it, took the program, took the dollars and took the area and really focused in based on what we heard from residents. Some of the concepts that you'll see in this application, we looked at MLK Park. So there's you've all probably heard, there's a massive redesign going on right now and investments campaign for rebuilding MLK Park. We have a little bit of funding for the tree lining in that corridor as part of TCC, but that's going to be our contribution. To the right there, there's safe routes to school improvements around five different school sites, Bestie Owens, McKinley, Vista, Lincoln, and Emerson. And so we have things like striping sidewalk gaps out there. What's kind of highlighted in that box is a hawk signal proposed out in front of Emerson McKinley and that crossing near Lowell Park. On the bottom left there, as as Director Johnson mentioned, kind of the pinnacle of transformation, we are working with the Housing Authority and the Bakersfield Senior Center to rebuild the existing senior center at 534th Street, which is a building that is probably well over 50 years old at this point, needs to be rebuilt. To rebuild a senior center on the bottom two floors and then do senior housing on top, so really would be a community center and focal point for the area. And then looking at some of the corridor improvements, so to the right there is a concept for redeveloping the the corridor along MLK Boulevard from California Avenue down to Brundage Lane. So looking at things like like tree line scape, tree scaping, sidewalk improvements, crossings, and also looking at bike treatment facilities there where you see the bike lane near the street and then some hashing to kind of protect between cars and bicyclists. In total, this is kind of our impact summary. So TCC will fund in its current proposal, we're looking at 52 new units of affordable housing, those are all senior units, senior units, excuse me. We are also going to be working with a group called MEO Car to launch a car share program, which will have its first hub at the senior center. So the seniors will have access to a reduced fee or voucher fee program for car sharing. We are looking to plant about 915 trees in the area, about 1,424 solar panels being installed through a program that's being collaborated by with KC CD, Current Community College District, Grid Alternatives, and Cap K to do energy weatherization as well as solar installation for homeowners. We're going to be looking at putting two community gardens, one in a property owned by Dr. Martin King Boulevard, as well as one at the senior center site. We're looking at approximately four miles of connected bikeways and sidewalk improvements between Chester, Fourth Street and MLK Boulevard, rebuilding the senior center and then also looking at developing some vacant lots in the areas. Commissioner Coleman, I think it was actually Mr. Cottrell mentioned earlier about MLK and the vacant property. That's something we're very interested in seeing is that redevelopment in those areas. And there's a ton of infill lots. How it's how we'll be working with us to try and build some of those lots for homeownership opportunities. In total, Southeast Strong program will have about 17 partners, which are coming from education to, you know, traditional affordable housing developers like the Housing Authority to community based organizations, to groups who focus on solar installation. We have a really broad network of partners that are going to be involved in this work and that's the thing that I think is most exciting, but then also is a good model for how we can make some transformative impacts in these in these areas. There are some of the the logos of our partners that you can see, Current ETR, Housing Authority, College District, Black Chamber, GBLA, Senior Center, VCCDC, among others. So as a result of this work, we submitted back in August. In December, we were awarded $22 million to implement the program. Our initial ask was 29.5, so we are right now working through a post award consultation process to reduce some scopes and also look for other sourcing to kind of gap fill what's you know, could be pulled out for other resources. But where we are today, so we're in the middle of a six to nine month process. Yes, it takes that long to go through post award consultation with this grant, there's a lot in it. We'll have five years to implement these projects once we sign that grant agreement. So we're probably looking at the summer of 2024. We'll have till summer of 2029 to finish out these projects. Right now, we're working to reduce our scope from 29 and a half million dollars to 22.125 million, but also simultaneously with the backing of Strategic Growth Council, with a consultant, as well as our own grant team, taking some of those projects that will be reduced or scaled out of TCC and then preparing them for a program called the Community Change Grant Program, which the EPA is currently funding, which is essentially a copycat in some way of TCC. It was staff from SGC, actually, many who were involved in setting that program up are now involved at the federal level and getting funding for this program. So we're looking at going after another 10 to 20 million dollars to gap that, but also add to the dollars that we received. And that application will be submitted in March. And so I think with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll just say on behalf of our team, we're excited for this program. We think it's a great model for the community level change that that we're looking to do in NECD. We think this is really the the collaboration, the model that was built on the back of community engagement through our process. And we think we talked to over 1,000 people from planning process to now, and that's not an exaggeration. We had 360 people vote on projects, hundreds vote on the elements, people go to our festivals, our events, part of the early planning process. We think we've arrived at a really transformative model for investment, but then also on our team's side, the really the social cohesion we have and the trust with some community partners was really key for getting these these funds secured and key for our work going forward. So with that, I'll open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kater.
You're welcome, Mr. Kater.
No, I just wanted to say huge congratulations. I think the effort and what was achieved to me is beyond inspirational. You know, I think you said a very apt statement in that we typically encounter and engage with people that already feel engaged and already feel included in the process. And to me, the disenfranchised nature of Southeast Bakersfield has been a sore spot in the city for a long time. And to be able to build community partners, provide real investment, real opportunity, improvements as simple as safe crossings to streets into new community centers is just such an exciting thing to see happen in such a such a strong community. And so I know your department didn't really exist as recent as was it economic development was only really in its fifth, sixth year? How many year?
Not, yeah, so we were a subset of Development Services about three years ago, I want to say, we became our own department.
But I think, you know, I think it's such the program, the project, the consensus building to me is just such an encouragement in the the importance in in advocating. in the, the importance in advocating for ourselves, investing in ourselves, and really finding ways, thoughtful, engaging ways to, to bring our population to be better represented in our, in our city. So thank you so much for your work. And I'm just so excited to see all the projects come to fruition.
Thank you.
Two questions. Do you put that map back up again?
With the projects on the map?
Yeah, you had a, you had a, the project area and then you had a gray line between it. Oh, I got to put it here, yeah. I just had a, that, yeah, the last one.
It shows the projects on there.
Yeah.
So there's photos.
Coming up. So you had, you had the project line boundaries in red. Then you talked about the gray dotted line area. Can you, can you explain that again?
Yeah, so, so we, early in the process, we, 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 we didn't have a boundary identified going into round five. One of the lessons we learned was to let the projects just kind of draw where we're going to focus our projects. But one thing we did kind of agree on when we started, no matter what, was that that about two-and-a-half-square-mile area was going to be like the core of the application. And so what that really became was just kind of a, a core focus point of however we end up drawing the five-square-miles, you know, finger this way, that way. That core was going to be a big part of our application. And so if you look at the projects now, the way the voting came down on the projects are, that, that core box there, I mean, really, it's, it's, so it's Chester Avenue over to the railroad tracks just east of MLK Boulevard, California Avenue down to Brundage. So that's kind of the, the area there. And I would say, you know, most, if not all of the, the, like, set funding projects are in that core. There are some things like safe routes. There's some stuff that's outside the area. And then also some of the solar programs are going to be for residents throughout the area. But that core, which is also on CalenViroScreen, some of those disadvantaged census tracts in the state in the 98th, 99th percentile, that's where a significant number of our dollars are going to be invested into.
This is more of a target area than a, than a limiting, a limitation, right?
Correct. It was, in many ways, I would say it was a agreed-upon consensus kind of area that we wanted to at least have as a, a major focus in the effort.
Okay.
And just kind of there for highlighting like where the core of the impacts are going to be seen.
Can you share a contact phone number so that we can call and talk to you about other projects maybe in that area?
Sure, sure.
I, I can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I can give you his personal address.
Anyway, I wanted to thank you. There was a long period of time where we didn't have any economic development going on after Governor Brown took away all the money. It was just kind of left up in the air. It was some, some interested parties that were supposed to divvy up the projects. And I'm not exactly sure whatever became of that. But I'm really glad to see the Economic Development Department back with new projects and new resources to get those projects done. And so, you know, thank you for your work on that. Because it's very, I echo Commissioner Cater. That one area that you've got in the little gray box area is really underserved. You know, the north of California Avenue is a little better, but that area, south of California Avenue, down to Bob Brundage Lane. Yeah, so I'm glad to see you guys focusing on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item Eight, Communications.
Does staff have communication items?
Yes, so jumping ahead and kind of staying on this topic with Commissioner Coleman is the March 7th meeting, regular scheduled meeting, will be canceled for attendance to the Planning Commissioners Academy. Staff attending, you have the two gentlemen in the back, they'll be attending with you. And with that, I did send out an email last week. We will have a special meeting on February 29th. We will be considering some, some projects on that, that we would request your attendance. And again, some of these may be controversial from the past. So if you have questions as you're reading through the information, please let me know.
Does that mean that you're not going by pointing out those two?
No, actually, I'll be driving them.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item Nine, Commission Comments.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 10, Adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 7:45 PM, February the 15th, in the year of 2024.